Let's call this meeting to order, please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to skip down to attorney cross. Ron, what have you got for us today?
Not a whole lot. I do think Beth or thou would like us to look at the housing accelerator documents I have.
Yeah.
Didn't have a whole lot of comments. I thought probably there ought to, even though you could do the math and divide the paragraph one point one grant by ten thousand to figure out the number of lots. I think there ought to be some statement, the number of lots that are involved.
I would agree.
Because that's the basis of a clawback.
Exactly.
Other than that, it's okay to me.
Brad, you were very involved in that whole process. Any comments at this point?
No, I'm glad that council passed it today and that we can get going. I think Mystic's comments were very valid.
Sure.
And, but I think this is something that's gonna go very quickly. We're not gonna see, it's not gonna be a twelve month haul before they start. I think once we get all the documents signed, I think these developers will start moving forward quickly.
That'd be great. That's part of the problem with, we've got so many balls in the air.
We have a lot of stuff in work saying we're gonna do Smith Hill, Elder Bearman, all this, but nothing's really a lot of back behind the, behind the scenes stuff's moving, but construction doesn't, but I think with this-
Yeah, I'm hopeful that-
It should be fairly quickly.
Good, good.
Well, and also thing too, I mean with our community meetings we've held across county, I mean every community says infrastructure and housing, we need, we need, we need. And, and I like this because we have, you know, the place in Centerville, the place right outside of Cambridge City. So we're, we're county wide on this project and I really, really like this project for that reason too.
You know, this is gonna be driven by developers, so there's probably not gonna be development in every community. So we'll, we'll see how it goes and we wanna make that available as we go through the process, but it won't necessarily happen in every community.
Right.
The, the developers will build where they have an opportunity and where it makes sense for them to-
But I'm very pleased and I think, I think it's gonna be a great program. Eighty-two lots is a significant increase in the billable lot.
Absolutely. Let's, let's make a point to review, review the document and make a decision next week.
Yes.
Let's keep the-
Ball rolling. Yes.
By the same token, let's also be thinking about what we wanna propose for the other eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars that, that we still have appropriated and do we wanna do round two? If so, at what point and do we wanna change any of the criteria from, from this round? So that'll, we'll need to go back to council and have that conversation, but I think we need to, we need to have consensus amongst ourselves on how we wanna proceed with that. Okay. Ron, anything else?
I've got an answer due tomorrow and the Best Step Road case as well as I'm working with Laura and getting the record together and forward to the attorneys. Not heard anything from them. We'll just have to see.
So what's, what's our role there? There was a, it's been taken, it's been appealed to the courts and we need to do something?
Eventually you'll have to pay the legal fees, but other than that, you don't.
Okay, but you're, you're involved somehow.
Yes, I, I am representing the BZA whether there any of the property owners who will choose to intervene, live on the Estab. Alerted the attorney who appeared for two or three of them at the hearing and he's aware that's been appealed and so I don't know if they're going to or not. My guess is maybe not. So we'll, we'll just see.
Okay. Nothing else?
Uh, I think that's it for the time.
Any questions for Ron? If not, let's go to Mr. Higginbotham.
Okay, just back to your project sheet, just a couple of things to follow up on, on the parking fairgrounds. At some point, you and you, me and you, we, we need to go to the fairgrounds. Need to actually zero in on where, where parking lot should be. We've talked in generalities, right? I know Mike is doing drainage plan for that entire east side, but you'll need to-
Did the, the fairgrounds committee actually have a recommendation specifically where?
I told, I told both Brad, Beth, Brad Terhar and Haley to have that recommendation of what they think the usage should be and have that ready. And the county will need to go out there and look at it, so.
What if, what if we were gonna go out there this morning?
They should have it ready.
Okay. We'll see what time we adjourn, if we have time.
They were told this two weeks ago, should they be ready to answer questions?
Okay.
Now, and the second thing is we need to zero in on that storage area too.
Correct, so if, if we all have time, let's see if we can get out there today. If not, we'll figure something out for next week.
I, you, you have something in the afternoon, I think though, don't you?
But it's only eleven after ten, so.
Yeah, I mean if we can run out there and-
Yeah, I think we should be able to.
On the, on the proxy card system, remember we had the department heads, the elected officials look at that proposed policy. There were a couple of things that you wanted added. I'll have those changes back to you next week.
Okay.
To consider adopting that. And as we go forward with implementation of this, Dale and I have talked. We're coordinating with the company that's installing these because there's a nobody else's key's gonna work and they'll need their, their proxy card to get in. So that window is pretty small. We need to gear up.
To get the cards made?
To get the cards issued.
Okay.
And, but I need, I, I think the way that works to program those cards, they, they need the address of those locks.
A specific like serial number and where it's located and all that?
Uh, I've got that request into the company that they can forward that to me. So my point is over the next forty-five days, this is gonna gear up pretty quick.
And do, do we now, does, does the security staff, are they prepared for an onslaught of a hundred people to move new cards or is there a process for that?
They were, they were in the meeting when they-
Right.
When we heard this. Now are they prepared? I don't know, but-
We'll, we'll need to follow up, Missy at least and-
Yeah.
And figure out-
Both the sheriff and Missy were in the, in the meeting.
So how, how has the communication been with the department heads and, and elected officials as far as giving you the list of?
So, Best Not's been started yet.
Okay.
Cause they will need that, right?
Yep.
Security will need that to program-
Yeah, because we don't know who's just getting an ID card issued to them or-
Or one with technology in it.
The way I visualize this, it'll be a spreadsheet.
And really the, the people that need the proxy card are the people who need access to the building after hours, right?
Well, there's exceptions to that, like probation, when they come back and forth, they would need access to the lock.
To that one, right, okay.
So that's through the day.
Okay. And there's others probably.
There's others like that.
Okay.
You have that, cause these are all exterior doors, so most people would not need access to it after hours.
That door was probably gonna be the highest one during the day, I would assume.
Yeah, now the, the, the east one down here also from the people parking in the Euro Bay line, some of them down here. Cause that always remains locked.
Right, okay.
So this is gonna ramp up pretty quick.
Exactly, yeah. Okay.
And that's all I have on the, on the project. Just a note to you, I passed out a sheet to you that at our fairgrounds committee meeting, we were comparing income for the first quarter of each year for the last three years, twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-three, and you can see on that paper, there's been a pretty good increase all three years. And that is pretty well when we started that, started the ramp up, our marketing of the facility. It also is an indicator that remember we've landed a couple of new vendors. The AKC dog show, the camping show. We landed another sheep show and then now we've also landed a quilt show, which is a big deal if you're a quilter. I've also included that email from, we, we actually had to bid on this with other, we were competing against other groups. And I included the email that we received from that group and it was complimentary of our website. Remember Haley's the one that designed our website, this vendor that is gonna use this, our, it's gonna actually use both facilities, both Coleman and Expo. They were very complimentary of our user-friendly website, so.
I would agree that Haley's added a lot to operations there. I, I would also contend that the investment we've made in upgrades to the building and fairgrounds has been a part of that as well.
It's been a part of it.
I think that, that helps, but nobody's gonna know about it.
Somebody's gotta reach out, somebody's gotta reach out, so. And also on that-
It goes hand in hand.
And also on that revenue page I gave you, I had her pull out just the table and chair revenue that we generated the tables and chairs that we purchased. And it's just slightly less than twenty thousand dollars. This would have been for about seventeen months. So into that three-year payback period, we're about where we should be.
Yeah. We spent around, we spent around forty thousand, twenty thousand.
Just a shade under forty thousand dollars, so we're, our payback.
So once we get a storage area, we're gonna need to think through, you know, do we need more tables, more chairs?
Yeah, and one thing in our meeting we discussed, we're still using, remember we purchased the round tables and the high-top tables, what I purchased, we're using our old rectangle tables. We asked you that, we look at that as the next replacement.
Yeah, okay, okay. Let's, let's go to Mike since he's here.
I'm finished.
You're finished?
Yep.
Well, we haven't gone through questions yet.
No, I can.
Let's go to Mike first and then we'll come back to you. You can sit and stew for a few minutes over what the questions are gonna be. Yeah, they're tough questions. Hi, Mike.
Hello.
How are you?
Good.
Talk to us. What do you need?
Got a few things, just kinda clean up council's signed it this morning. But one of them was to create a line item of thirty-three, six-ten of other repairs into the restricted fund at eleven seventy-three, uh, is to pay for some room parts that's we can pay out of restricted money instead of unrestricted money. Our restricted money's got a better account than our unrestricted money, so I'll have that account. The other one would be to create two funds for community crossings, uh, to where we transfer money into and then the state, when we receive their money, will go into those funds. Then those two projects will be paid out of that and then anything that's left at the end will be distributed back between us and, and Dot evenly. And then the fourth would be transferring ten thousand dollars from restricted stone and gravel to stone and gravel unrestricted in the MBH fund. We put a concrete pad in. At the beginning of the year in January, I transferred everything into restricted from stone and gravel. Typically, we don't do a whole lot that's unrestricted, but this pad, which is not quite ten thousand, I just even the number around them. We'll see where we are at the end of the year. We transfer things back and forth throughout the year on that one.
Okay, so we've got the state grants. Trying to sort out all this paperwork that I have here and we don't need to approve anything except yours. Yours in the edit funds. So printed on both sides. Do you have the ones for, for me to sign? They were back there, okay, so they're in this pile somewhere?
Told you, you can't trust him with anything.
Why would you give them to me ahead of time?
She shouldn't have that either. I'm blaming Bobby.
Okay, that's one of them. That's single sign. Are you sure? Wait a minute, maybe it's in this pile. It's not in that pile. Here we go. That's the, Mike. I don't know that you did, man. They're not in this pile. This is the pile, if you can find it, then I'll admit that I'm wrong, but I don't see Beth's signature on any of this stuff. And those are ones that we don't have to sign. I think you gave them to Steve. Okay, let's just approve for me to sign them.
Okay, can we, no, it's very-
No, I know, but we'll go through them one at a time. So the first one is for-
First one would be create a line item of thirty-three, six-ten, other repairs in fund eleven seventy-three restricted.
So moved. Second.
We have motion in a second. Do I hear any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose same sign, motion carries.
Second one would be create fund ninety-two-ten in community crossings, east single seal.
Ninety-two-ten.
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose same sign, motion carries.
And then create fund ninety-two-twelve, community crossings, west single seal.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose same sign, motion carries.
And transfer ten thousand dollars from eleven seventy-three zero five three one stone and gravel to eleven seventy-six zero five three one stone and gravel.
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome now. Couple other questions.
Sure.
Speed limit signs between you and Steve, where are we at with those? Uh, I know there was some issue of they weren't the approved signs, but is there a way to make them, get them approved?
We're working on permits with the state and we'll see if they approve them or not approve them.
In the meantime, can we go ahead and put up the ones that are on our roads that don't need approval?
So why weren't they not approved? The sign itself was not approved?
Correct.
We ordered the wrong signs?
Apparently. So we're trying to figure out if there's a fix or if we can send them back and get the kind we were supposed to get. But at any rate-
I think there's four that will go on county roads. Um, so we can put those up if you want.
Go ahead and get those put up with input from the sheriff's office and we'll, we'll move forward with that. The, I noticed a, a couple of the building and grounds pickup trucks have some rust on, over some of the wheel wells. Is that something that your guys can, can work on and fix and repaint for us?
We can take a look at them. Some of them I know are deeper than just a surface rust that probably need to go away.
A couple of them look to be just surface and I wanna see if we can get that taken care of before it goes any deeper. So I, they were out there this morning.
Probably be like next fall. We're winding down on our painting, cause we're winding up on our road projects. So most of our painting and bodywork happens in the wintertime?
Yeah, but not all of it.
Most of it. Well, I mean, we can, we can look at it and see where it stands at and
There's-
I mean, I can put them in for rainy day type of things. It's just, you want road work done or do you want bodywork done?
I'll talk more to you about it, but it, one of them at least was, is a newer truck that just has some rust around the rear wheel wells, so.
Okay, so if they could bring them out, have them bring them out to our shop sometimes so we can evaluate them and kinda see what it's gonna take to do.
Great, thank you.
Glad to look at them.
And then you and Brandon are still working with, with Gordon on the fairgrounds?
I believe Brandon is. Yeah, he's more on the, they're working on the drainage part of it. I don't have much to do with the drainage part of it.
Okay.
So yeah, last I knew, they were working on it.
We're gonna try to get out there today and identify more specifically where we want the parking to go.
I think we're gonna be able to move, uh, so the one, it was set up into three parking lots. Uh, the one parking lot, we kinda fudged to the north a little bit. We're gonna fudge that back to the south. We fudged this north because of the carving tree.
Right.
It's no longer out there.
It's no longer out there? No kidding?
So we, so that will save from having to take some of the trees to the north. Uh, we won't have to take as many trees to the north out, so I talked to Brandon about maybe being a little, fudge that back down a little bit since it's gone. Uh, then that's less trees we have to take out to the north part of it.
Was it, was it destroyed when it?
Brad said it was no longer usable.
Okay, yeah, that's too bad.
Yeah, I think it was all hollowed out.
Okay.
Dead tree.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in.
Thanks, Mike, thanks.
Sheriff, good morning, how are you?
Good morning, I'm well, how are you?
Doing well so far.
Good, good. Come before you today to ask for a purchase that exceeds the threshold in our purchasing policy. So for handguns, for both, well, all of the enforcement division and a part of the jail division as well. And if I can, I'd bring quotes forward.
Thank you, sir.
Yep. So the current handguns that the enforcement and ones that will be replaced are over six years old. And they were acquired in January of nineteen. And we're looking to replace those. Typically, we replace them on about a five-year rotation. Uh, so we are beyond that. We've done a lot of research and determined that the Glock Model forty-seven with the Aimpoint optic is the best option for us. We've, like I said, done a tremendous amount of research and, and, and this is, quite frankly, is an incredible price. Uh, they rolled these out this year, something brand new. Glock and Aimpoint have gone in collaboration and provided this, this product as a joint effort and both are certainly proven platforms and this price is, is over two hundred dollars cheaper than its nearest competitor. So I'm very pleased about that.
Do you have anything that shows what the competitor's price is?
Competitor would be a different manufacturer.
So it'd be a different gun?
Correct.
Okay, and nobody else sells this gun in this area?
Yeah, so to explain that, we've had a lot of conversations with the, the district rep for Glock and they actually told us if we buy it directly from the factory, it's gonna cost more than it would be from this company. Uh, there's only one other company that's in this area, Ray O'Hearn, and their prices are exactly the same. Glock sets the pricing for their products. Where they make up the difference, these individual vendors is, is buying accessories like holsters and other things like that. So when these transfers take place, that's where they make up their money.
And the, so you said there, there's another vendor that had exactly the same price?
Correct.
But was the trade-in allowance the same?
That I am not a hundred percent certain on. I would have to talk to my firearms guy. So, and there's other things too, as well as, in addition to that, it would be the cost for the transfers for anybody that wishes to buy their firearm back.
Okay, and I'm, I'm looking for ways to justify this is the, this is the best vehicle. But is this a special purchase or is there, is there some element that we can make?
Well, I think the missing link is you can't spec a brand. You have to spec features that that brand may contain and I guess see that anywhere.
How much money is it? Do you have that?
Uh, the total is twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven.
That's with the trade-in allowance.
Cost of the arms themselves are thirty-nine thousand, one hundred seventeen dollars for fifty-one weapons, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars apiece, which doesn't seem out of line to me, but-
It's actually really cheap, yeah.
And then two hundred and seventy dollars for trade-in on thirty-eight of the, of the current weapons.
I mean, I will say, knowing a little knowledge about weapons, and I think why Glock is making this reasonable, two years from now, this will probably be twelve to thirteen hundred dollars.
Very possible.
Because it's a, the optic with this is new. So I think they're trying to get it out to law enforcement so that-
Have, have people-
Kind of a marketing scheme, I think, for them, yeah.
But I, so how do, how do we, what do we hang our hat on to say this is, meets our, our purchasing policy and, and we should authorize the purchase? So is, is there something different that we need or is this?
Uh, I, I think the features that the Glock gun has.
Okay.
And I think he's got those in his file, it's just a matter of getting them.
And-
Out of you folks.
And so with just having the specifications of what they're looking for, do they still need to put it out for bid?
No, this is, this is just a quote situation anyhow.
Okay.
Based on size.
It's under fifty thousand. So, so as long as we know that, that these are the features they're looking for, this is the only weapon that can provide those, because you said-
Well, it's the best, it's the one that has the best back.
Okay.
Because I think I also heard him say basically, this is apparently the lowest price of, of the various quotes that you took in, is that correct?
Yeah.
I mean, other than the fact you have two vendors for this gun.
Which, yeah, are, are the same price.
Yeah, which is the same price, I know, that's-
Yeah, cause the price is fixed by Glock, correct?
Yeah, they're set by, set by the company and strangely enough, the, the company rep even told us that if we buy it factory direct, it's gonna be more expensive. I can't really explain that other than they cut, cut the, cut the vendors a little bit of a break, give them profit.
And I think, is your practice typically to replace all, all handguns in one, in one cycle?
Unfortunately, in this, in this time, we're not gonna have enough in our budget to be able to do that. It would be ideal to do that, but we're, we're going to, gonna have to work on the jail full replacement next year.
But I think at that point, then you're gonna have an issue of compatibility of, for, of existing supplies and that would weigh in their favor also, you know, so.
So, let me try this one more time. Is this, do you have one of these?
I have one, I think I'd like to see it supplemented with the features of this gun.
And, and that's what I'm getting at.
Like the specifications?
Yeah.
What exactly do we need from Randy to be able to authorize a purchase?
What he and Brad think are relevant to the specifications and functional features of the weapon, as it sets it a bit of-
What he and Brad think are relevant to the specifications and functional features of the weapon, as it sets it a bit apart from any of the others they looked at.
Okay, does that make sense to you guys of what, what we need?
I think so.
Okay.
Is this, is this gonna require a new holster?
It will.
Same caliber?
Same caliber.
So, same.
Nine millimeter.
Same ammunition.
Same ammunition. And that's part of the issue too, is, um, we, um, we have to buy ammunition, uh, to, without, in layman's terms, uh, these guns have different features, uh, than the current guns, so we have to go through a transitional period and instruction with our, our staff that, uh, as they get those. So, uh, we will have to be buying some additional ammunition, um, and I have to set aside sufficient funding for that.
For training?
Correct.
And so what, what about the, the holsters? Is that an expense that you have in your budget?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so.
So, can we, can we make an, uh, a motion subject to receiving specifications? Or would you prefer not?
I'm comfortable with that if, if Ron is. It's just that.
I mean, I think.
Let's not place the order until we have.
Just make sure that we.
Paperwork together.
Build, build, build the case as we go, and then after this, I think it's gonna be pretty easy to stick with that.
See?
Or any successor.
So, you just simply need a document from me indicating what the specifications are?
Yeah, and, and it wouldn't hurt to have a lay commissioner's explanation of the, you know, there's two aspects. You can describe the feature of it, can you describe the benefit? Because we may not be able to make that, now Brad probably can.
Well, they can, but I can't, so write it for Jeff, you know, just dumb it down a little bit.
Yeah, and I would, I would go in there, I, I, I think from what I've heard from Ron, say, why Glock? It's overwhelmingly choice of law enforcement agencies and your agency.
Based on those features. Based on these features, and this is why we need handings features.
Nothing wrong with talking about the market because this arguably represents a unique opportunity for savings.
That's right.
And that, that, that's probably the easiest sell is a special purchase.
And the fact that we've been, uh, our agency has used, uh, Glock handguns for fifteen-plus years.
Okay. So, you can put that together and, and once we get that, I think it sounds like we're ready to.
Just don't convolute it.
I won't convolute it.
You don't want convoluted explanation.
So, I'll make a motion subject to receiving specifications to why we are purchasing Glocks over any other manufacturer. And I'll say a fat.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve, uh, the purchase of fifty-one handguns, uh, at a total cost of thirty-nine thousand one hundred seventeen dollars, um, minus the trade-in value. Subject to receiving documentation on why this is the best, uh, the best choice for Wayne County Sheriff's Department. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Excellent. The only question I would have is, uh, do you want me to bring this back to your next meeting or is an email sufficient?
Why don't you send it to us and, and we can, we can look at it, email it to the three of us and.
Send it to Brad and her.
And we can.
And decide.
We can decide.
Okay.
At that point, whether we need to wait till the next meeting or say, okay, we've got the information, go ahead and.
And, and one thing you might also note is the quotes that you might have received from the other manufacturers and approximate price for, is nearly apples and apples.
Okay.
Yeah, recognizing it, it won't.
And I would say if there's another vendor, um, that would sell it at the same price, why? What's the benefit of this vendor as opposed to the other one?
Okay.
Good deal.
Right.
Anything else?
Uh, not today.
Okay, well, keep up the good work.
I'll try my best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Steve, did you say you were done?
Yeah.
But we've got questions for you.
Okay.
We do?
I know not doing.
I don't.
No?
Well.
You said you had a question.
Actually, we have a couple.
I do. Where, where are we on the vehicle policy on?
The safety, the vehicle safety policies?
Yes, yes, yes. Where are we on that? I just keep it in front of us, that's all.
You were waiting on your response from the sheriff and that, that little, marrying those two together. Rest of it's that.
Okay.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay, let's put it on the agenda for next week's meeting. Did you, did you get anything from the sheriff about how that could be incorporated? His, his changes, his differences?
The out-of-county work.
Uh-huh, because he was gonna give us, he said he was gonna make a decision on what his policy was gonna be that we could incorporate into.
Because we were changing that, like, out-of-county.
Yes.
Use of vehicle.
And, and I thought he said the only out-of-county use he was gonna allow in the future was working with the state police on, on like traffic things. And, and as I recall the discussion, it was because there's a lot of things locally with, with grants and speed, that, you know, speed things.
He's gonna concentrate on.
He wants people to take those.
Wayne County, yeah, take those projects over.
Instead of going out of, out of county to something else.
And then that, that wording, uh, the assignment of cars. Remember, our policy has specific reasons for assigning a car, but he has had at the discretion of, of the sheriff, I think, at that.
Yeah, and we were gonna, we asked him to eliminate that, and was that okay with you?
And the rest of it, I think you all can curd on.
Okay, well, let's get together this afternoon and we'll, we'll work up an email, uh, asking him to, to finalize those details. I'll copy you guys on that.
Okay. And then the sheriff garage mechanic, I don't know if that's Steve's question or if it's ours.
I think it's.
Steve's involved in it, I know, so.
It's up to us, and I think probably.
Just where we are on it.
Personnel committee, so I think we need to make a decision. They put a, an extra, um, person in the budget, an extra mechanic in the budget.
I thought the last time we talked, it was gonna be, we were gonna sit down with the sheriff and Mike.
And, and us.
And us and say, okay, what do we, how, how's this look in this transition?
Okay. So, we need to schedule a meeting with Mike and the sheriff and us.
Yes, and let's try to do that for next week too.
That'd be great. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay.
Sign each on vehicles. Do you know where we're at?
I think it's all finished with the exception of two.
And those two are.
He's been scheduling as they come in for oil changes.
Okay.
And one of them is the building commission. I think one of the coroner's trucks.
I think, I think all three of the coroner's vehicles have it on it now.
Okay.
I, I, they do actually. I've seen them on all three, so.
Yeah.
They still have one that's not.
Just a handful left.
Okay, I, you know, I see them, I see them all around, so.
I know, I know Sora's truck's not marked because I saw it this morning.
Okay.
But I think you're right, Brad. I think there's a EMA truck that's not been marked, uh, and if you say the coroner's been marked.
They have, they're all pretty.
And I will say, it is nice, you can readily see a county vehicle now.
Yeah.
And then I, I've seen a few out and about, and I'm like, why are they there? You know, kind of, you, you, there was one in our neighborhood and it was, it was a, do we have a black van?
There's a community correction thing.
That's what that was then. It was on, over off of Henley Road. I'm like, why is that van just parked there?
Probably had personnel picking up.
Yeah, well, I didn't know what it was, but I could see that it was a county vehicle.
Which I think, I think they look good.
Yep, I agree.
Coroner told me that he was pleased with how they came down.
Good.
That he thought they looked good, um, and he was one that, that.
I know, he had some questions.
He had some questions. Um, the surveyor, that truck looks good and they're happy with it.
And I do know that I've talked to, and I think I've forwarded it, Matthew, it's said he was fine with that on there, but they really would like to have some additional markings.
So, I think we just need to get them to.
Give us a design. I thought he was gonna go out to A plus and have them write up designs so that, and figure out how we're gonna pay for it.
Exactly, so I think, I think we're making good progress.
I assume you've had no problems with anybody getting it done, then just as a normal check, good.
We also need to, um, think about a couple of things. Number one, the fencing around the electrical boxes on north of the courthouse.
Yes.
And then also the, the same kind of fencing west side to close off that arch and have a gate, a lockable gate there.
Yep.
You know, which material do we wanna use? How tall do we want them to be? That kind of stuff so that, so that, uh, Smirelli can get material ordered. I'm sure it's not something you buy off the shelf.
It's, it'd be really nice on that back gate if we could have a, a prox card almost instead of a key, but I don't know if that's, would be something that we can get done after the fact or not, but that's.
We'll have our prox card experts look into that.
Because that, that would be kind, then you're not giving out keys again to everything, so.
At least electronic keypad.
Yeah, something. Well, something quickly accessible for the jail staff to get the inmates in and out, so.
And then we need to start thinking in terms of, of landscaping. As they, as they get done with some of the concrete work, uh, then, you know, we talked about trees and you still haven't been able to find the tree service to, to give you a quote on removing.
Between trees and fencing.
Yeah, fencing for the, for the maintenance building. So. There's, there's fifty thousand dollars in that contract for landscaping. I think some of the dangerous trees need to be removed and, and that is gonna feed into that fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, I could be thinking of that.
If, if we took out all the ones that need to come down. I know, those are probably, I don't wanna guess, but, uh, those are gonna be expensive, so. My opinion and we know yours, I think the ones that need to be taken down for safety's sake, we need to allocate funding to do that.
I agree.
And.
Sooner than later.
Left, yeah.
And do it now in summer.
Exactly.
While we've got all the construction going on out there, so.
Because we got some hanging over parking lots, some hanging over streets, so it's, I agree.
And then if there's money left over, then, you know, what else are we, are we gonna do? Which, which areas, uh, should be high priority? You know, I personally, now that they had to remove the bushes around the courthouse to, to do the stone work, I really like the way that it looks, being able to see the granite at the bottom and then the limestone.
I think minimal, I think, uh, maybe just like rocks.
Rocks or grass or.
Because we don't wanna do mulch, because then there's a cost of redoing mulch every year and keeping the weeds out of it. If you do rocks and put the underlayment, you know, the tar underneath of it, the weeds.
The weed fabric.
Yeah.
Well, do we wanna make those decisions working with council? Do we wanna hire somebody to make recommendations?
I would like for somebody to make a recommendation. I mean.
Kind of would too, and it.
I'm not lazy to tell.
Of material of, you know, if we choose to put, uh, gravel or rocks or something close to the, the courthouse, you know, what kind should it be? How, how big should they be? You, you know, if, if you have really big rocks, is that somebody gonna use those to break a window or?
Right.
What do we really want from security perspective as well?
Steve, could you see if, um, I don't even know the name of this company, that Ben guy, if that's something he does?
Yeah, what was?
Give recommendation, like what to do around the courthouse if it's ours?
I thought the, um, whoever did the wall and the, and the bushes around the generator seemed to do a really nice job.
I think that was that guy I'm talking about.
The same guy? Who, who, that was Hager, somebody in Hagerstown, wasn't it? Hagerstown.
Landscape.
Nettle Creek Landscape, you think that's it?
I think that's who it is, I'm doing, I'm talking about.
Well, let's, let's make some calls and, and check into that.
Yep.
Okay, anything else besides, uh, finding these documents that I need to?
We have a hotel rate, it looks like.
Yeah.
And then do we need to approve the endorsement of the fee?
We need to approve the done, uh.
The fifty dollars per.
Right.
Talk to council.
Do, uh, do you want, anybody wanna make a recommendation?
I'll make a motion that we approve the.
Admin fee schedule?
And, yeah.
Second.
Have a motion in a second and further discussion. If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
All right, aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. What else have you got, Bobby?
I have two hotel rate increases.
I thought we.
We did raise it.
It's gonna be one fifty-one.
The first one's from the child's support division for one room, three nights, hundred fifty-nine dollars a night at the Hampton Inn in Fort Wayne. The second one is from the prosecutor's office for three nights, eight rooms at a hundred fifty-four dollars a night at the Embassy Suites in South Bend.
Maybe we should, maybe, maybe we should move to one sixty. I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second to approve those rates. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. What else, Bobby?
Um, we need to start looking into doing another property assessment with Buckley and Associates.
All right, how, how long has it been?
Two, two years?
Um.
Last year.
It would have been twenty-two was the last time we'd done that.
Three years, okay.
Is that Buckland, what you said?
Yeah.
It's personal property.
Yes.
It's personal property?
And.
It's like equipment and furnishings and?
Equipment, buildings, everything.
It's everything. Every, every, you know, we use physical asset.
Above that threshold.
Above the threshold of, what did we say, five thousand? Okay, so it's mostly like cars and buildings and expensive stuff, okay. Do we, do we have a proposal from them yet? Okay, so we'll get together and you guys, okay, to pursue that?
All right, yes.
Coming out of our contractual, uh, line item in the budget, okay, we'll, we'll pursue that. Anything else?
Nope, that's all.
All right.
City, city planning sent us that quote over. I've sent him a message, the page one of the stop signs.
Oh.
Because we can't approve that or, yeah, you'd sent, I sent it to you guys.
There was, oh.
Page one of the three was missing.
Yeah.
Total was like ten thousand and change, and we were agreeing to pay half of it.
Okay, so you have page one?
No, not yet.
Oh, okay.
So, the flashing stop sign out here at the crosswalk.
The crosswalk on.
On Fifth Street.
Mid block.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we already approved that, didn't we, subject to getting the quote, I mean.
Yeah, I'd like to see page one.
All page one to say.
Because that's where most of the money was on page one.
I just wanted to give you an update. I've requested it.
Okay, good.
So.
Good.
Hopefully, we get it by next week.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
All right, Ron?
Our, our issue on twenty-five North Seventh went away. The city's paying the taxes.
Okay, good, which is probably what they should do.
Right, they should do.
Situation, okay. Mark?
I heard the sheriff, when he was talking, he said he had at least one other quote on those pistols.
That was the same price.
Yeah, uh, just as a suggestion, maybe that should be in the minutes also as to who it was and the amount that they quoted.
He said he was gonna get that put in that specification.
Okay, anything else, Mark?
I do know that the company that he quoted with is a company that we've worked with for years with firearms. I do know that.
At Jacksonville?
Yes, yes, it's same company. I know.
The other company went out of business.
Yeah, yeah, so it's a, it's a good relationship.
Because they were selling them too cheap, so they.
The prices are fixed by Glock.
All right.
It's called a blue line pricing, so.
I have a few items.
Yes, sir.
First of all, in my stack was, uh, Buckland and Associates.
That's what we just talked about.
Okay, we're good, right?
Thank you. Do you have the, uh, the documents that Beth signed in your stack?
No.
Okay.
I do not thank you though.
Because I don't, I don't have it in my.
I appreciate you asking, thank you.
As far as I know.
Uh, before I get to the, uh, the minutes and, uh, the claims, I would like to share. From March eleventh to May fifth, we had four hundred nine visitors to the highest point in Indiana. I was just informed. I was just informed of that. I just wanted to share that, so.
Thank you.
That's kinda nice.
You don't need to put it in my mailbox.
I see those all the time.
I'm, I'm gonna be glad to share it, so you guys can see that. I think it's important.
You're new and you, you are fascinated by that. I've, I've seen dozens of those reports and they are fascinating.
They're very fascinating to see the visitors that we get.
Absolutely.
Anyway.
From all over the country, all over the world.
To keep this moving. So real quick, my, my opioid, uh, convention I was at last week, it was very good, very informative. Uh, one of the big things that they really talked about and one of the, uh, key factors that I believe that everybody's wanting to start hitting is more early. Education, more early prevention, more early intervention. Because we, you know, as a group and we discussed from, from all over the states is. Uh, we, we think that we allowed to go too far and then we try to, we try to stop the drug addiction or it, um. And, and the issues going on in all of our communities and it gets to where overdose rate is high. And so, uh, one of the big questions that we're looking at, uh, countrywide is early intervention, early education. And that's really the push and the, the focus that a lot of people are wanting to, to go for. Uh, with some of this opioid settlement money, which is good.
However.
Yes.
The question that has come up in the past is, is that an allowable expense from the restricted money?
It is.
And it, it was ruled that it was not earlier, so if it, you know, let's, let's review. The allowable expenses, because if we do that, it's gonna take some of the restricted money, cause there's not enough unrestricted money.
Well, and, and one thing that was brought up and they said as long as it is a direct education. Of drug prevention, uh, drug addiction. Then you can use a restricted funding for that, if it's direct education. So if it's education toward that, yes.
Naco's interpretation.
Correct, so.
That's, that's who had the original interpretation that it couldn't be, that it had to be. A more immediate connection to saving lives.
Right.
So.
So.
So that's good.
Direct education is, uh, is good for restricted, so, so I was happy to hear that. I'm glad, and, and, and I'm glad they kinda loosened up the strings on that. Because I, I re- everybody there felt like that it was an important factor, so.
It may be a, a step for us to take to check with, uh, with the attorney general's office, just.
Correct.
Sure that they agree with that interpretation.
I would agree, yes.
So have you thought through, um, when and how you wanna, you wanna go about the next, um. The next phase of awarding additional funds?
I do know that there's, there have, to my knowledge, there are a couple of organizations within our community. Who have, um, expressed interest in receiving some funding and, um, I, I would like to possibly have them come in. Um, at some point in time and, uh, meet with the, the group on our advisory committee that, uh. That we use now through, uh.
Through the health department.
Through the health department.
And I don't disagree with that, except that I, I would like for us to take a step of, of announcing to the community. This is our process for, uh, awarding opioid funds and, and solicit applications. Instead of, instead of, uh, kind of reserving the money for the two or three groups who've already asked us for.
Sure.
So I, I think, you know, it complicates things, it makes it, it, it certainly means we have, we have a lot more. Uh, requests to look at, but I'd, I'd rather allow people to make requests and then choose what the ones that. Uh, are thought to be the highest priority.
Well, I think if we do that, then we need to put a timeframe where.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, it's not an open.
Absolutely.
Invitation and whenever, I mean, we start.
Accepting them today.
June first or May, and say today till, you know, end of the month or whatever it is, so that we.
Put a timestamp on it and then, you know, we, we through the media get the word out that we're accepting applications.
Agreed.
Not that we're accepting them right now.
Right.
Let's, let's work on.
I'm gonna reach out to the attorney general's office and, and verify.
Let's get all our.
And, and make sure all that's good, have some guidelines set out, so this is what we could use restricted for, this is what we could use unrestricted for. Uh, if you're interested in, in, like you say, put it out in the media and maybe within the next, uh, within the next thirty days or something, we can kinda. At least put it out and then.
Leave like June first, kind of, would that give us?
That would be, that would be great, yeah. I, I think by June first, the first, our first meeting in June, I think we can have that accomplished where we can at least.
Put it out there.
Put it out there and then here's the timeframe.
We need the application by June thirtieth or something, yeah.
Give about thirty days for that.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Good.
That'd be a great timeframe, so, yep.
Also, just in, along those lines for our viewing audience, I wanna let, to brag on one of our commissioners here. Who went, not only did he go to DC and, uh, for the opioid, he was invited to go to, uh, the White House. Could you tell us a little bit about your experience there and why you were invited to the White House and?
Sure, so as, as part of that group, uh, there were three of us that were asked to go to the White House. Uh, for a meeting in the White House, called the meeting through Naco. And they wanted to know about homelessness, they wanted to know about drug addiction, they wanted to know about overdose in our communities. Um, they wanted to know maybe some things that would, we can look at, uh, to help solve it. Some, the way, some areas that will not work. And, uh, so because of my law enforcement background, I was chosen as one of the three of that group to go to the White House meeting. Uh, very good open dialogue with, uh, advisors to the president, three of his, uh, direct advisors were in that meeting. And along with, uh, their aides and, uh, they, they were very open, um, to the dialogue that we had that day. Uh, I, I know one of the biggest things we talked about, uh, and one of the solutions isn't. Uh, it shouldn't fall under necessarily law enforcement, it shouldn't fall under, you know, we arrest, you know, arresting everybody, put them in jail is not the answer. Um, but yet, uh, we need to find treatment, appro- appropriate treatment, uh, for, um, mental disability, uh, drug. Overdoses, homelessness, um, but to make, um, to make those all crimes and just arrest people and put them in jail is not the answer. Uh, we, you know, our jails are already crowded now, cost a lot of money, a lot of liability for our jails. And, uh, so we had some really, really good open dialogue and, uh, and the White House called that meeting and asked for it. And took a lot of notes and, uh, I really appreciate them being open and candid with that conversation.
Well, thanks for, for going and participating. I think that's a real plus for, for us.
Again, another person in the White House that, from Wayne County is pretty big deal, the sheriff first and not you, so.
Speaking to your point about, uh, about options beyond incarceration. Now, the, the, uh, the crisis center that Centerstone has, has started up. I think is a really good option. To either taking somebody to the emergency room for a psych evaluation or, or putting them in jail. Uh, which have been the only options, uh, and. Funding for Health First, uh, Indiana has been cut substantially. We are, um, currently supporting the, the crisis center with money through Health First. So that may be something that we need to evaluate. My hope is at some point in the very near future, they'll be self-supporting. Because they're able to, to bill, uh, insurance and Medicaid and such for, for their services, so.
But and something else that came up too in, in the opioid conference and along with the White House meeting is. Uh, uh, kinda the same, uh, mindset was is the same, one treatment will not take care, will not cure. Or will not be a benefit to everyone.
Right.
Because everyone reacts in different ways, everyone responds in different ways. And because of that, our communities, uh, and the federal government, when they talk about possibly helping or, or making policies. We need to look at, it's not just one answer for everybody, it's gonna be multiple avenues, it's gonna help. Uh, because again, not everybody responds to the same treatment, uh, or the, or the same, um, avenues of, of, uh, health, so.
Good point. Okay, anything else? Anything you wanna recognize me for, Brad?
No.
Yeah, I just wanted to give you the opportunity. If there's nothing else.
I have.
You do have something else.
Other, other things.
Oh, flames, yeah.
Let's do the minutes first. Can we do the minutes first?
I don't.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from April twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five from the board of commissioners meeting.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
I have claims. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following claims. State payroll taxes, state and local payroll taxes dated April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Pay, payroll premiums to Boston Mutual dated April thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Dunflex and garnishments dated May second, twenty-twenty-five. Herf and federal payroll taxes dated May second, twenty-twenty-five. Payroll dated May second, twenty-twenty-five. Jury pay dated four twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-five. Claims to Galcasa paid, uh, dated four thirty, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, veteran assistance dated four thirty, twenty-twenty-five. Semi-annual readmittance to the Common School Fund dated five one, twenty-twenty-five. Centerpoint dated five eight, twenty-twenty-five. And general claims dated five seven, twenty-twenty-five. And the last is Elder Bearman Project paid five twelve, twenty-twenty-five. I'd like to make a motion to approve those.
Second, motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Anything else, Aaron?
Now, I believe I have wore my welcome out today, thank you.
Not at all, not at all. Thank you for everything you do. Fine, I think this time we're all done. Anybody else? We're adjourned.